We're gonna get started now. Is this on? Can you hear me?
What? I can't hear you.
Hello, hello.
Testing.
Hi, Mark.
Testing.
One, two, one, two.
We are? Oh, there we go. Thank you. Thank you. Hello? I'm gonna call the meeting's order. Good evening and welcome to the September 2017 regular meeting of the Hoboken Board of Education. Mr. Moffett, if you would start with the statement of compliance?
Yes, sir. This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Publics Meeting Act. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in local newspapers on September 9th, 2017 and September 10th, 2017. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that this meeting is a violation of the Open Publics Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the board at a later date on cable television channel 77 and FiOS channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on board docs which can be accessed through the district's homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of this meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business. Thank you. If you could please rise for the salute to flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Mr. Moffett, you call the roll, please.
Ms. Angley?
Here.
Mr. Biancamano?
Present.
Ms. Delara?
Here.
Ms. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Mr. McNamara?
Here.
Ms. Sovoloff?
Here.
And Mr. Cluffell?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. We don't have Students of the Month this month. It's just a little too early. So, we're gonna move right to the superintendent's report tonight.
Okay. So, we will have our Student of the Month presentations at our next board meeting. But for tonight, what I'm going to do is an overview of some of our new district programs. And I also would like to pass out, Ms. Angley, if you could maybe take half this way and Mr. Cluffell this way. What I'm passing out to the Board of Education right now is a comprehensive calendar that was put together for students at the high school from the guidance department. So, that'll be part of the presentation this evening. And I'm also going to be passing out a schedule. It's front and back-sided of the offerings from the high school personal growth period, which is known as the PGP period. And that will be referenced in the presentation this evening as well. So, tonight, you have the presentation in front of you for Board of Education members so you don't have to worry about turning around. But obviously, with the opening of school, we have a number of back-to-school nights that are happening, and they will be coming up within the next month and also the beginning of October. So, those dates are there for you. The dates are also published on the district calendar, and they're published on the mobile app as well. But really, what I wanted to do this evening is just walk you through a number of new initiatives in the high school and also some new academic initiatives in the elementary school as well. So, this presentation will provide a comprehensive overview of some of those new programs, new courses, et cetera. So, at Hoboken High School this year, we overhauled the program of studies predominantly because we wanted to look at some classes that had been running for a long time, and we decided that we wanted to put some courses in that would be of great interest to students. So, the list that you see on the screen behind you or on the presentation that's in front of you are listing of all of the new courses that are offered at Hoboken High School. In addition to the new courses that are offered at the high school, there were also a number of curricular revisions and enhancements and modifications to some existing programs. So, in addition to adding things such as Chinese and some of our courses in mathematics and our biomedical science program, as well as our engineering and computer science program at the high school, there were a number of electives that were added. And then, in addition to the number of electives that were added, we also did some modifications to our Spanish and French curriculum documents. We also realigned our world history, geography, and cultures curriculum. We took some time to look at Algebra I and Algebra II, as well as geometry and trigonometry, and introduced a new textbook series for both algebra's as well as geometry at the high school. And we also did a review of our environmental science and sustainability course and also the elements of art course at the high school. So, you can take a look. There's a few other things on the list, but these are just some of the areas that we made some curricular changes. In addition, we decided to do something a little different this year at the high school in terms of certificate programs. Hoboken High School always ran something called CTEC, which is a technology-based kind of hands-on, skills- and trades-oriented curricular program that kids would go through a very specific year-long, actually, two-year-long program and come out of the program with specific certificates. We decided this year that we were going to overhaul some of our traditional technology classes, and we switched them out with some things that would give students certificates as well. So, our kids now have the opportunity to go through an entire Microsoft certification program. So, it's not just a word processing course or anything along those lines, but they have the opportunity to leave the school year with the Microsoft certifications, as well as the Google Level 1 for education certification as well. In addition to that, we have implemented the WISE Financial Literacy Certification Program that the kids can take when they complete a few different courses, our personal finance course, and they can also take it, this particular test, when they finish some of our business education courses as well. And then, finally, for the first time, we are introducing a program at the high school called Code It, which you will see in the months to come. So, we're looking at a November start for that. But basically, what Code It is, is a partnership between a nonprofit organization and the Hoboken Housing Authority. They're doing a lot of work with individuals in the Housing Authority to actually go through a coding program that will give them an opportunity to have some internships and job programs afterwards. So, what we decided to do, because there are many of our students that have family members that are participating in this program, we decided, based on some conversations and review, that we would introduce it in the high school during PGP for kids that were extremely interested in coding as well. All right. So, the personal growth period, there's a lot of text up on the screen, but you do have it in front of you as well. We introduced the personal growth period last year at Hoboken High School, and this is a period that gives kids the opportunity to make some choices during the day regarding the things that they would like to study or become immersed in. And so, during the personal growth period that happens each and every day at the high school, we offer all kinds of things such as college and university admissions visits. This is the time when we have all of our instant decision days. This is also the time when all of our subject areas run support labs to assist kids if they need any kind of help. It's also the period during the day where we have schedules put together for lectures and different programs so that instead of running one career day every year, we have the opportunity to have people come in throughout the entire year and do some programs for kids. We also run during this period our aquaponics and our hydroponics lab. We have a number of new programs that are taking place this year during PGP, including the Future Business Leaders of America program. We also have the Stock Market Challenge that's happening during that period. Our kids are participating in math league competitions already during that period as well. So, there's a whole host of things. But the one program that I did want to highlight and focus on is something called the Inspired Classroom Challenges. So, we are offering and partnering with a nonprofit organization that's located in Montana. They've done a lot of work with school districts on the West Coast. But what they do is they are a challenge-oriented distance-learning program where they design challenges for middle, upper elementary, middle school, and high school students. And what these challenges are, basically, are kids are presented with a problem that exists globally, locally, on a state or national level, and the kids are taught a problem-solving strategy in order to learn about the problem and also put forth resolutions and solutions. So, this Inspired Classroom has put together four challenges for our high school. They will be rolled out each marking period, and the kids will have the opportunity to participate if they so choose. Each of the challenges that we have offered at the high school right now are in areas that will absolutely engage them in global problems. So, we have one challenge is on worldwide poverty and inequality. One challenge is on biodiversity. There's a challenge on green architecture and sustainability. And there's also a challenge that's related to the oceans crisis and climate change. With each of these challenges, the kids will actually put forward some solutions and resolutions that will be part of a global summit at the end of the year. In each challenge, the kids will also be connected with experts from around the world through distance learning, and those experts have been set up and already secured through the Inspired Classroom organization. In addition to that, every single challenge will conclude with a hands-on trip so that the kids can actually see kind of the fruits of their work over the semester. So, in addition to this taking place at the high school, there's also a marking period challenge that's being introduced at the middle school level, 7th and 8th grade, as well as the 6th grade level for the students as well. So, that's a little overview of the personal growth period. It continues to grow at Hoboken High School. And in front of you, there is a document. It's a double-sided document. It's color-coded, looks like this. And this document actually gives you September's schedule for the PGP period. So, it will outline all of the lectures, all of the programs, and all of the opportunities that the kids can get involved in during the day. Okay, some of the new communication vehicles that we're implementing this school year, Ms. Delar is actually going to be talking about some of these, so I won't hit on them too much, but I did want to put them in a presentation and in writing for your record. But some of the things that Ms. Delar probably won't touch upon is we are introducing Classroom Dojo at the kindergarten through 6th grade level on a consistent basis. We've trained all of our teachers on it, and Class Dojo gives teachers the opportunity to set up virtual classrooms to be able to communicate efficiently and continuously with parents. And then, at the 7th through 12th grade level, we've trained our teachers in Google Classroom in order to set up Google Classes and communicate as well that way. We will be doing quarterly newsletters from each school this year that will go out at report card time so that parents will have an idea of all of the things that are happening in the school during the marking period. And then, in addition to that, you'll see some of the other things that Ms. Delar will probably hit on in her report as well. All right, some additional highlights at Hoboken High School that I just wanted to draw your attention to. The Theater Arts Department was featured in two prominent publications, Teaching Theater Magazine and also in Playbill.com. So, the Teaching Theater article was all about our production of Peter Pan, and it is this absolutely beautiful capturing of the play. And then, in Playbill.com, it was a story in an article on why it's really important for high school theater departments to expand the types of shows that kids are participating in, and Hoboken High School was highlighted in that Playbill article. In addition to that, we have a brand-new biomedical sciences lab that's set to open very shortly at the high school, and that biomedical sciences lab will accompany the brand-new engineering lab that we built last summer. In addition to that, we have a new automated attendance scanning procedure at the high school, which is kind of interesting. We took a video today just to see how it actually worked. But what will happen is, and what is happening, is the kids wear their IDs on their lanyards and similar to different college and university buildings, the kids have a barcode on their lanyard, and when they come in in the morning, everyone comes in through the main doors, and there are two attendance desks set up, and the kids show their ID and their picture, and they scan, and their attendance is taken. So, with that being said, the reason why we are excited about this is that it eliminates the time during the classroom of personal collection of that data. But in addition to that, from a safety perspective, one of the reasons why we find that it can be extremely helpful is that what it will do for us is give us the opportunity to put these scanners in. They are very, very inexpensive in each classroom so that we have the ability during any kind of safety drill or lockdown to be able to immediately know who's in each classroom and who isn't if there's a problem. So, we're going to try this for about a month, and if it works well, we will be implementing this in one or two of our other schools as a pilot, just to see how it works. And I also wanted to highlight some of the other district-sponsored programs. As you know, the Rutgers Pre-Medical Honors Program that we run each year, our kids get on a bus on Wednesday nights and they go to Rutgers. It's part of our biomedical sciences program. But this summer, we also added some additional programs. We had students that went to the Future Physician Scientist and Technologist Program at UMass Lowell. The Waxman Student Scholars Program, which was a program at Rutgers, New Brunswick. We also sponsored the Rotary Youth Leadership Program and the Junior Statesmen of America Program at Georgetown University. So, we had a number of kids that participated in these summer programs as well. And then, lastly, we have our Classroom Without Walls Program that, right now, is planning to head to Italy, but they are still exploring some of the options with that trip. And in addition to that, we're looking to expand the Classroom Without Walls Program to, or I should say, pull it back in a little bit. So, in addition to the international trips, we're also looking at trips in the United States. So, the high school is in the process now of examining and exploring the Civil Rights Museum in Atlanta for a trip for our kids, as well as some other opportunities during the school year. Let's talk middle school, if we can. I think I jumped over. Where's Richie? Can you just reset that for me? Thank you. I need to go to the middle school slide. So, as you know, this summer, we worked to... Yeah, if you can just hit it and set it on the middle school slide. So, if you can scroll up a little bit. Keep going up. There you go. We worked to get the middle school moved from the high school to the Demarest School Building. So, I can tell you that, like most construction projects, there are always some glitches and time constraints. But with that being said, a couple of updates. All of the classrooms right now have all of their, the phones are installed in all the classrooms and are working. The RICO boards in every classroom are up and running. The desktop computers in every classroom for the teachers are up and running. We just installed the photocopy machines, and those are up and running as well. The instructional materials in all subjects except for mathematics have been distributed, and the reason mathematics has not been distributed yet is because the teachers are going for one additional training tomorrow. So, as soon as that's finished, they will begin rolling out the official math program. The Chromebook carts, we have nine Chromebook carts at the middle school. They are 24 Chromebook-equipped carts, which is virtually a one-to-one ratio for our kids. Those Chromebook carts are in the middle school. They have not been used yet on the first two days of school. In fact, one of the classrooms did use the cart today, but we do have a few other carts that are being distributed so that we have a couple on the third floor and a couple on the fourth floor as well. But some curricular enhancements at the middle school that I just want to point out is that we shifted to a new mathematics series. So, we will be utilizing Connected Math in grades 7 and 8, and we have also adopted a new Algebra I textbook series as well. We've added four additional math periods per week, which we thought was extremely important for the students. We have shifted our social studies curriculum at the 7th and 8th grade level. So, we shifted our curriculum at the 7th and 8th grade level. So, our 7th grade students will actually be immersed and engaged in an American political, social, and economic systems-oriented curriculum, and our 8th graders will be going through a world geography and cultures curriculum. We feel that both of these approaches will actually highlight the strands of social studies that are most critical for our kids and actually prepare them for the rigors of the high school as well as advanced placement courses at the high school. In terms of recess, we are still in the process of having conversations with our neighborhood schools and other schools that are in the area that have been utilizing Church Square Park. It is prime time during the day and also during lunchtime. So, because a lot of schools also use the park for gym class, and we are the newbies on the block, we are attempting right now to have some conversations to be able to gain some space and some time, and those conversations are going very well and positively, so I don't anticipate any problem with that. One of the other comments that we heard from parents last year was, could we implement World Language as a full class in the middle school as opposed to one day a week or one marking period? So, we heard that loud and clear, and we implemented World Language as a full five-day-a-week class this year. In addition, we added a STEM block, and in that STEM block, the kids rotate through marking periods. So, all students in the middle school will have one marking period of Fine Arts, one marking period of musical theater, one marking period of the Inspired Classroom Global Citizenship Program, and they will also have one marking period of the Project Lead the Way Computer Science and Applications Program. The middle school after-school program, we are in the process of finalizing our stipends for our teaching faculty. And so, with that being said, that program is set to roll out early in October and will include intramural sports as well as clubs and activities. On the agenda, Ms. Angley will certainly thank the Wallya Peters family for their donation and their contribution, but one of the critical things that we are going to be moving toward next is the establishment of a living classroom that will be out in the back of the school, and that living classroom will hopefully bring a whole series of learning regarding the Hudson River to our students. So, there's a new student council that was set up in the middle school, and our middle school principal is in the process of establishing a PTO, and there was a meeting this evening for the new established PTO. At the elementary school level, there were also a number of enhancements, so I just would like to go through some of those. In the Passport to Learning Program, we have a number of existing programs that we decided to keep and include in the Passport Program, so you can see those on the left. And on the right, these are some of the new programs that are being implemented this year. So, there's golf and coding, there's comic book development, there's Math Circles, which is a program that we're partnering with Stevens Institute on. We are also launching a young zoologist-in-training program, which will include the incorporation of a professional zoologist as well as the visitation by some reptiles and some animals as well. In addition to the Passport to Learning Program, we have some elementary academic initiatives, and I just wanted to make sure that the community was aware that we had added additional time to our mathematics program. In addition to that, we will be, we have some interns that are part of our graduate school cohort here that are working on the development of a library-media-infused curriculum. They are also working on a digital quotient technology-infused curriculum as well that will be incorporated in our social studies period as well as our language arts period. We've always had one period of our related arts, like art and music and world language, but we made some changes at the 5th and 6th grade level. We added an additional day of world language, and at the 6th grade level, so that the kids could transition to the middle school, we added a semester-based program as well. There were also some questions regarding recess and physical education, so I wanted to make sure everyone was pretty clear on that. We run physical education two days a week at the elementary school level, and we have recess that's wrapped around lunch for 20 minutes, five times a day as well. And our kindergarten, I just spoke with our principals today to ensure that this is happening. Our kindergarten children also receive and will receive 20 additional infused minutes of recess, and that will ensure that they still get challenge and support, which is a class that we wanted to make sure that they do in fact get. And then, finally, there was a question at a previous board meeting about theater arts, and I just wanted to make sure that the community, school community knew in the board that our theater arts program is going to be happening. It did not exist at the Wallace School last year. It didn't exist at the Calabro School, and it did exist in some of our classes, about 80% of the K and 1 classes at... and it did exist in some of our classes, about 80% of the K and 1 classes at Brant School last year. This year, the Theater Arts Mini Workshop Program will be extended to each of our elementary schools, kindergarten through second grade, as a transition to begin expanding this program district-wide and at the upper grades as well. So, those are the things that we worked on and the initiatives that we worked on over the summer. In addition to the items that you have in front of you, like the PGD schedule and the guidance schedule, that's just a little bit of an overview of some of the other programs. So, if anyone has any questions, I'd certainly be happy to answer. If anyone in the community has any questions and they would like to ask, they can certainly email me or set up a time, and I'd be happy to respond to any of those inquiries.
Yeah, I have a question. I was just curious, Dr. Johnson, these new courses that are added at Hoboken High School, did they have to be substituted for other courses? Like, for example, I know that Mandarin Chinese is new, and breaks my heart that Italian is not offered anymore. So, did all of these courses have to be substituted for these new... Were these new courses substituted for older courses?
For the most part.
For the most part.
Yes, for the most part. So, we were offering some traditional courses. To give you an example, like sociology, that we saw high schools offer for years and years and years. And what we decided to do was shift that particular course offering to 21st-century cultural literacy. So, we decided to take some of the courses that seemed to be becoming a little bit outdated, and kids were losing some interest in them, and we tried to create some courses that would generate more interest on the part of the kids.
So, it was an enrollment decision, there wasn't enough students enrolled in the older courses, but yet you want to try to add these new courses to get...
It was a little bit of both. It was actually a little bit of both. So, some of the classes, it was enrollment. So, for example, a course such as Italian, our enrollment was extremely low there, so we did decide to make a shift. Although, I'm sure all of you remember that we have a program, a virtual school program at the high school called Ediscire and also Edmentum. So, even though we're a small high school, our kids have the opportunity to take any of those classes online and in small cohorts if they so choose.
Understood. And it might be a little early since early the fourth day, but we don't have a grasp of how the enrollment is within these new courses, correct?
No. So, we do. Yeah, we do. And I can provide the enrollment on those courses for you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I had a quick question. For the personal growth period, this one question that always comes up, the parents always want to know about, for the safe sitters, who should they contact when you're looking into that program for safe sitters?
So, the Safe Sitters Program operates out of our School-Based Youth Services Program. So, if anyone has any questions or if they're inquiring about securing a sitter, you can contact Cecilia, Dr. Cecilia Delia, and she's the director, and she oversees the School-Based Youth Services Program.
Thank you.
Board members, any other questions?
Just one other question. The Inspired Classroom, sounds great, partnering with the nonprofit. Will the middle school and sixth-grade program work the same way with the global challenge at the end?
So, the sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade Inspired Classroom Program, the only difference is that there are four challenges at the high school, one for each marking period. At the sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade level, it's embedded in our STEAM block, so the kids will have it for one marking period. So, in essence, they'll be exposed to one challenge. So, what we made the commitment to do is ensure that whatever the challenges that the sixth graders get, they will have a different challenge in seventh grade and a different challenge in eighth grade, and so on and so forth. So, they will still be able to experience a number of different challenges.
The Living Classroom with the Hudson River, that's different than the trout in the classroom?
Yes.
Could you explain a little bit?
Yes. The Trout in the Classroom Program that is happening now, we were fortunate enough to have our Hoboken Public Education Foundation fund Trout in the Classroom. That's a program through the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, and school districts that apply to be part of this, they can do so. And the Department of Environmental Protection will actually supply trout to each school at their earliest stages of life. And basically, what happens is the kids in each school will raise the trout, and they will then either connect with a hatchery in Warren County or Sussex County or somewhere throughout the state of New Jersey. And they will actually not only learn how to raise the trout, but also release the trout properly, so that they can actually survive and go back into their habitat. So, with that being said, that is a completely separate project. Each school will actually have a tank and will be part of the Trout in the Classroom Program. And again, we thank the Education Foundation for funding that program in each of the schools. The Living Classroom is something completely different. We, tonight, will be accepting a $10,000 donation for the start of the building of that classroom. That program, Miss Sobolov, is for... That's through us. We're designing that program based on research on living classrooms that other school districts are actually employing in other places. And basically, what a living classroom is, is a classroom that incorporates research pods and also hands-on materials, evidence, specimens, a whole host of things from wherever the living classroom concept or theme is. We've decided to focus on the Hudson River, because it's an estuary that is right here in our own backyard, and give the kids the opportunity to actually experience, learn more about that estuary. So, that's separate and apart from Trout in the Classroom, although we are looking to bring striped sea bass into that program.
I have one question, too. I know we discussed in the last meeting that some of our federal funding for professional development has been decreased. So, I know when I'm looking at all of the new classes offered, I'm wondering, are we have enough set aside for all the training, the teachers, and administrative staff by executing as well? And do we have enough feedback loops in place to make sure that after one quarter, we are addressing the professional development needs that we'll go forward?
Yeah, absolutely. So, Mr. Fitchew oversees our professional development program, as well as like all of our staff needs for professional development. So, you bring up two really good points, and one is the feedback loop. So, we do take feedback after all of our professional development offerings, and Mr. Fitchew does reach out and has a system in place to ensure that each of the classes that we're actually implementing, that they have what they need in order to be successful. The classes at the high school, the new electives, are classes that are being run and offered through teachers that have experience or expertise in those areas, which is a little bit different than new courses that are offered at the elementary level. But even with that, we will make sure that they have the materials that they need and that if they do need any kind of additional training, they will. So, over the summer, we sent some of our teachers for training for the new Project Lead the Way classes at the high school and different things like that. But we will absolutely reach out to the teachers that are doing new electives and things to make sure that they have what they need.
Anybody else? Well, thank you, Dr. Johnson. Mr. Moffett, then.
Well, I had one item, and Ms. Engley will be covering that in her report for finance committee.
Then we'll move on to committee reports. Ms. Delara, communications?
Sure. The Communications Committee met on September 8th at 1:00. In attendance were Ms. Sobolov, myself, and Dr. Johnson. The items we talked about were adding additional sessions to our Talk in the Park series for our pre-K 3 and 4 families. So, those have been very popular, and we're adding a few more. We are also rolling out a new, which you've seen on the slide, a new Talk in the Theater Program, which is... will be held here at Demarest Auditorium. And the purpose of this event is really to welcome all new families, not just the pre-K families, but just all from, you know, K to 12. It's going to be informational session. You'll get the opportunity to talk to Dr. Johnson, ask her your questions, and she'll kind of explain a little bit about our curriculum and, you know, kind of like what the day will look like for your child. We are anticipating that the timeline for this will occur end of September. The district is also working on rolling out more specific roundtable discussions. So, the discussions that we've been having are a little bit more broad about, you know, what the day looks like, what the signup process looks like, what the registration process looks like. So, now, we want to do more roundtable discussions to talk about, you know, what is the theater program? What is that about? What is the special education program? What is the athletics program? So, we're going to tailor them very specific, and you will be getting some notifications about those coming up soon as well. We are happy... I was happy to report that Dr. Johnson had a really good interview with the Hoboken reporter that will be featured on the Hudson Reporting Magazine. The story is going to feature the partnership that we currently have with Project Lead the Way, as we are currently the only district that is implementing this program from K to 12, which is... It's a really big deal, so we're really excited to roll that out. So, that should be coming up within the next month or so. If you are on the email list, you probably got the digital hurled, kind of a welcome-back-to-school, some procedures, drop-off, pickup procedures, some of the new exciting things that are happening that you just saw on her, on Dr. Johnson's report. And the last thing we talked about was our back-to-school night. So, those are all scheduled, those are all up on the calendar. I just want to quickly go through those with you. Our Brant School Open House is going to be on September 19th. The Hoboken Middle School will be on September 25th. Connor's, September 26th. Calabro, September 27th. Wallace, September 28th. And the Hoboken High School will be on October 3rd. And that is all for my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sobolov, do you have anything left on the curriculum?
Not a lot. Just a... Yeah, so, the Curriculum Committee met on Thursday, September 7th. In attendance was Dr. Johnson, Mr. Clubfeld, Ms. Evans, Ms. Delara, and myself. And yes, we had extensive conversations about the pact that you just heard about. So, it's very exciting, been a lot of very interesting conversations the past few months. So, thank you to Dr. Johnson and the staff and everybody for rolling out all these new initiatives. One of the other things that was discussed was some of the clubs and the activities in the high school have also seen some improvements or tweaks. Some of the clubs are still there. So, Hoboken High offers and continues to offer a wide variety of clubs, and some will remain. For example, we have always had the Hispanic Culture Club, African-American Club, Gay-Straight Alliance, National Honor Society, Harvard Model Congress, the Art Club, and our award-winning literary magazine. There are a few new reconfigured clubs. One of them is the Thespian Club, which will encompass the Drama Club, but also a lot of the other things that they do during the year, the various competitions that they have. Then there's an Academic Competition Club, which will also just kind of encompass everything from the Cyber Patriots competition that the students participate in, the STEM Team, Academic Bowls kind of thing. There's an International Club and a STEM Club, which is robotics, chess, different things like that. Touched on a little bit in the presentation was the middle school. So, some of the activities that are being explored for that are the intramural activities, which may include tennis, cross-country track, swimming and fitness, and a variety of academic enrichment clubs. And I think everything else was covered. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sobolov. Mr. Madigan, the so this.
Facilities Committee met last Thursday, September 7th. In attendance were Sharon Engley, Tom Clubfeld, Irene Sobolov, Dr. Johnson, Mr. Callagie, and myself. On our facilities request, we had one on the agenda, and we approved of it in the meeting. We'd also talked about the middle school relocation and all the work that was done upstairs and everything that was... Everything was done by Thursday. A few touch-up things had to be done, but there was a lot of hard work over the summer. And we should be proud of all the workers who really put hard work into that. Less than two months, they had to do that, and it looks pretty good upstairs. So, that's one thing. We also have made a date for our Long Range Facility Plan Subcommittee, which is the same committee that we're on, all of us, of Ms. Engley, Mr. Clubfeld, Irene Sobolov, Dr. Johnson, and Mr. Callagie, and myself. So, we know we're busting at the seams at certain schools, and we are trying to plan our futures with this committee. And also, we approved the part-time security guard. With the opening of this building, we needed more security for our children, and that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Madigan. Finance Committee, Ms. Engley, do you have a report?
Yes. The Finance Committee met on Thursday, September 7th at 7:30 PM. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mr. Moffett, Mr. Clubfeld, Mr. Bianca Mono, Mr. McNamara, and myself. The committee reviewed all agenda items and recommend all for board approval. Item 10.09, the approval of donations. We'd like to thank the Hoboken Soccer Patrons for donating practice jerseys for our girls' soccer team. As we just discussed, we'd like to thank Rena Walea and Joy Peters for a very generous $10,000 donation for our living classroom. We really appreciate their commitment to the district. Item 10.10, approval of Passport to Learning Providers. This resolution is to approve our Passport to Learning vendors, who will be providing the enrichment to our students for the after-school program. All of these vendors went through the RFP process. The committee also discussed the food service program. As we've discussed in the past, we have an unpaid lunch balance, which is approximately $30,000 at this point. The district will continue to collect and reach out to those families to collect that money. We also discussed the accounting around that for year-end. And lastly, we discussed the equipment lease. Recently, the board approved an equipment lease in the amount of $1.7 million for the projects related to the middle school renovations. TD Bank financed the loan at 1.82%, and that loan has closed. And that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Evans, Governance and Personnel?
Sure. So, the Governance and Personnel Committee met on September 7th. In attendance were Ms. Sobolov, Mr. Clubfeld, Superintendent Johnson, and myself. The committee reviewed all agenda items on the agenda tonight and recommend all for approval. I'll just mention a few that generated some discussion. Item 9.01, you'll see that Ms. Rosaria Spina is retiring. She's been with the district for almost 18 years. So, we'd like to thank her for her service to the district and wish her all the best in her retirement. Item 9.07 and item 9.08, we're approving substitutes that were previously employed in the district and also new substitutes. And the committee discussed that we have a good-sized pool of subs, and this is helpful as well when we have a long-term... A teacher go out for a long term, and then we can tap into that pool for a replacement, since some of the teachers in the pool are certificated. Items 9.17 through 9.20, this reflects approval of Passport to Learning staff. These are our staff working the Passport to Learning Program. And we discussed paraprofessionals and the Passport to Learning Program. There was some confusion that there weren't going to be paraprofessionals in the program this year, and there are, just as there were last year. You can see on several of the items that we're approving paraprofessionals. So, the needs of the children in the program are evaluated, and aides are placed in groups where they're needed. Item 9.21, approval of assembly. We'd like to thank the Persist Kids Group, which will be coming back to Connor School this year, and they'll be offering a leadership program for sixth graders. And also, as we've discussed, a lot of work done to get the middle school ready to go. So, we just had some extra hours needed. Item 9.23, to start and with everything ready to go on day one. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Am I on here? I would like to have a couple of remarks for the president's report. Starting with about a year and a month ago, on August 1, 2016, a complaint was filed with the New Jersey School Ethics Commission, charging board members Ms. Evans, Ms. Sobolov, then-board member Dr. charging Board members Ms. Evans, Ms. Soboloff, then-Board member Dr. Gold, and me of several violations of the School Ethics Act when we voted to accept our own donations at a board meeting to the legal fund in support of the litigation with the New Jersey Department of Education. From the onset, we were instructed by the Ethics Commission not to discuss the matter publicly, and I refrained from doing so. I think all of us followed that instruction. But now the decision has been published, and it is a matter of public record. Six months ago, in March 2017, the Commission dismissed all but one of the charges and postponed until its August meeting a decision on the final charge. And on Friday, August 25th, three weeks ago, after the last board meeting, the Commission issued its final decision. The Commission found no ethics violation whatsoever on the part of Ms. Evans, Ms. Soboloff, and Dr. Gold, or me. And in the Commission's words, "The matter is now dismissed." So I just wanted to inform the Board members that that's off the table. There was no finding of any ethics violations. Moving on, I would just like to echo what Mr. Madigan said. The tremendous effort on the part of our building staff. Was Mr. Callagie here?
Yes.
Doing double duty over there on the soundboard, I guess. And the superintendent, and just about everyone in the district, the administration on down to our building staff. The tremendous amount of work and extra effort to get the schools open. I've visited all of them. I've seen, I knew the high school, and I've, of course, been in the middle school here, to get the schools ready and open on time on Thursday. I have heard nothing but excitement. The schools are bright and clean and ready to educate. And so I think on behalf of the entire board, I think we should all, sort of a round of applause for our building staff. And thank you all. Now I would open to Board members. Any questions or comments on the committee reports? Hearing none, then I'll move on to public comments on agenda items. Only Mr. Moffett, can you check? Do they come in? Agenda items?
Non-agenda items.
We have three speakers listed. The first one is Ruben Ramos.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me this evening, or thank you for hearing me out this evening. Just wanted to say that you have an item on the agenda that you thank us for, Ms. Angley, thank you very much. The Hoboken Soccer Patrons, we created that nonprofit 501(c)(3) over the summer with the help and guidance of Superintendent Johnson, Athletic Director England, as well as Coach Gennarelli, in a way to support the girls' soccer program, which my daughter and other parents are part of. So the board currently is consisting of four parents and one member of the community, the Hoboken general business community, to support the group. And the reason we wanted to create this organization was to support ways where the taxpayer of you guys cannot support it. For example, prime example tonight was training jerseys. The girls went to practice in all different types of shirts. It didn't have any coordination to it, so we wanted to make sure they were somewhat uniformed out there, so we were able to purchase some training jerseys for them. And anything that we purchased for them as an organization is with coordination with the coach and the athletic director as well, because we don't want to step on anyone's toes or overstep our boundaries. We want to make sure that everyone is working in the same direction for the benefit of the student athletes at Hoboken High and the county high schools as well that can play at a Hoboken High School. So that's where we're looking to go for with this item. And also, for offseason, additional training, where we could fund for not just our daughters, but for all the girls on the soccer team at zero charge to them, because that's where soccer really gets enhanced, not during the season, but during the offseason. And any other way that we could support our student athletes, whether it's through tutoring or anyplace else, to try and get them not just at the high school level, but on to the next level as well. And with that, we want to let you, inform you that we are looking to host two events upcoming. One is October 18th, which is a Wednesday night, and it's not just the Hoboken Soccer Patrons, the Hoboken Girls' Soccer Team, but also with Hoboken City FC, which is a local travel organization. And we're going to have a Hoboken City FC Soccer Night at one of the Hoboken Girls' Soccer Games, which will be against Saint Dominic Academy that evening at 6:30. So all of you invited to attend. We're going to invite all the Hoboken CFC teams to attend, and we'll have pizza and other goodies to give to the, to the, to this potential future Hoboken High athletes, so that could expose the parents, as well as the young soccer players and students, of what great academic things you have going on in Hoboken High School and Hoboken School District, as well as the county schools. This is a program where they could really see their girls playing at, similar to what you see with the Hoboken Junior Red Wings program, where you see on Friday nights, you see the Hoboken Junior Red Wings really supporting the Hoboken High School football team. So we want to try and create that culture and that environment similarly to, for this, for this program, where the parents could interact with the coach and the other girls before the game, potentially after the game, and really see what the program has to offer, as well as the academic side of it, side of it as well. And on November 17th, obviously, none of this stuff could come out of all of our pockets. We want, we're looking to have a, November 17th is a Friday night at the Hoboken Elks Club. We're looking to have a Best of Pasta contest in Hoboken, where we're going out to various restaurants and seeing if they would donate pasta. I think our tickets are $50, I think, I believe? Thirty to forty-dollar pricing. We're still working on that as we speak. But that is a goal of our, help to raise funds, to do all the things that we want to do in support of our student athletes. And we're reaching out to various restaurants to see if they could donate, and then we'll obviously have anything left over there. I know Mr. Bianca Mano's family is pretty good at making mozzarella. We'll see how good they are at making pasta. So we look for wonderful donations from Mr. Bianca Mano and his family. But that's really what we want to do and really try and move things in the right direction. This, although myself and Jas Conlon, who's here with me tonight, who's part of the Executive Board, our daughters are freshmen, but we really want to try and make this last long before our daughters are gone, and someone else could step into the Executive Board position and move it going, whereas this lasts about 10 to 20 years, because Hoboken City FC is a really, really excellent grassroots program. And you could get a lot of excellent, not just students, but athletes. And people are looking for different options for their children to go to schools. This could be a really viable option you guys could really promote and look at going forward to the future. So we're looking forward to working with all of you to move these programs forward, not just in the soccer. If there's anything else we could do for any other athletic programs, please don't hesitate to reach out to us. So thank you very much, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you. And we are in official 501(c)(3) nonprofit status, went for that over the summer as well. And with Dr. Johnson's guidance over the summer, we will comply with all, we already comply with all NJSIA rules going forward. Really appreciate your time tonight. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Moffett?
Next speaker listed is Jas Conlon? Conlon?
Conlon.
Conlon? Good. Together. The next speaker then is Ms. Patricia Waiters.
Hi, Patricia Waiters, 1233 Park Avenue.
Good evening.
I have a few items on the agenda. Could we start with? Oh, and thank you too, Mr. Ramos, because that's one of the items I was going to speak on when I seen the word donation, but you really went into detail and explained, so that helped me out a lot. Nine, subject for the approval of staff passport-to-learning after-school program, 9-20 on page 14. I see a lot of names listed for the after-school program in Wallace. Do Connors have an after-school program? That's the one, that's the same thing on the top, right? 9.19 is Connors' after-school program. All right? All right? Okay, so the Wallace after-school program, just for confidentiality reasons, and I know the Rice Notice Law, there's a few employees on here that parents have issues with. I noticed we discussed it last year, and apparently, I mean, I don't like when things are taken unknown disregard. I'm not saying nobody's not doing their job, but I see their name is back on the list for the after-school program, and making $40, $44 per hour. I mean, and I got parents that was willing to even go outside the district and come out of their pocket to pay, just to make sure their kids be treated fair and equally in the after-school program. So it is a little disturbing to stand here tonight and see a few of those people back in Wallace in the after-school program. That's one thing I'm going to ask that you look into. I don't want to state no names at this time, because I think that's unprofessional with that one. And now... Because when I leave here, I know I'm going to get the phone calls. So I just want the parents to know that I did bring it to your attention. The monthly transfer is very important. 10-03, approval of monthly transfers. Okay, will the public be able to get access to, if I have to open a request, let me know, to what funding and what money was transferred? I want to make sure $8 million just don't start floating in the air like the city council last week. And it's saying to transfer back into the budget, am I right? This is what this amendment is for? The budget is, if you was in compliance, I don't understand why you want to transfer. It says to approve transfers back into the budget. 10.03. Will we get access to knowing what had to be transferred or whatever? Because...
I'll ask Mr. Moffett to give him...
You can answer me later, because I just got two more real quick.
Yeah, later.
Long as the public get access to it, because I want to look into that. And what Mr. Ramos just spoke about, donations. We all know there's an election slowly approaching, and I don't want to link any type of donations with that, but I appreciate that, and that's excellent what you're doing. But down at the bottom, Renee, Wiley, and Joy Peters is $10,000 for District Living Classroom Initiative. Where is that located? What school that goes to?
The classroom.
The middle school.
The middle school? Okay, that's good to hear. City Baptist Church. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, number 11, and then that's it. And then the City Baptist Church. Page 20. Number 11, the legal action. Is that what you just read real quick, Mr. Klumpfeld? Because I didn't hear you. I wasn't clear on to what you said. I only caught the "in" part when I heard you mention your name and Mr. Leon Gold. That's not the same lawsuit?
11.01 is approval of a settlement agreement. That's a completely separate issue.
It's two different things from what you mentioned.
Yes.
Okay. And then that's it. Finally, the recommendation of action for the church, City Baptist Church. Do that go into the budget, or is that just extra for facilities? That don't, that's not added into the budget, the $945 a month? That's not part of the school budget?
That, that's miscellaneous income.
Miscellaneous, under, okay. Okay, thank you.
If I could just respond to the...
Yeah, Ms. Waiters? Mr. Moffett's going to give you an answer on that transfer...
The transfer report are part of our monthly financial statements, and they're all available for public inspection, and they are public documents. So, and it's accumulative. In other words, by the end of the year, it'll also be captured in our annual report. Well, no, this will be available in my office if you need to come in and look at it. I mean, if you want, if you would like to have an electronic copy, just you can leave your email with me, and we could send it. But it is available to the public?
Was there any other things we needed to respond to?
Yeah, no more speakers?
Okay, no more speakers. Then we're going to move on to the consent agenda. But before we do, there's one minor issue that is being raised about one of the agenda items. So before we move on to the consent agenda, Mr. Gagliardi wants to address it for us.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I know there's a resolution tonight as it relates to expenditures associated with the upcoming school boards convention. Rather than have that tie up the agenda when board members vote on the consent agenda, they should simply indicate that they are abstaining as to the payments to themselves. And otherwise, you can still operate through a consent agenda.
So just abstain in that list?
My concern, of course, is if you all abstain on that item, it's not going to pass. So you can vote on the item, just abstain on the payments to yourself.
And those payments are simply travel reimbursements for gas and...
Correct.
Whatever else.
Hotel. Correct. Hotel. Right, so they're routine, but they're all part of one resolution, so I don't want to be any problems. If any of you live together, you should abstain on the payment to that person too, because it's money to the same house. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. So with that clarification, we can move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
It's Mr. Madigan motion, and Sharon Angley is the second. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Bianca Mano?
Thank you. Two items tonight. 9.02, Dr. Johnson, the acceptance of the one resignation. It's always a little concerning to me when we receive a resignation right at the beginning of the school year. And because obviously, you know, the sixth-grade students in Wallace School will most likely have a little bit of instability with what type of teacher they're going to have. So I was just wondering, what type of process does the district have when a teacher resigns? This seems to be, well, it seems to be she resigned in July. But what type of process? Do we put a leave replacement before we find a permanent teacher? And I guess, since she did resign in July, we had two meetings, or another meeting right after that. Why wasn't this on the agenda beforehand, just so we could have found a replacement sooner?
So this individual has been on a family medical leave for approximately a little over a year. So she hasn't actually been with us.
Right.
So she kind of, well, it's personnel decisions, so I can't discuss that.
No, no, right, all right.
She hasn't been in the district for a considerable amount of time.
Okay, so if this is approved tonight, there will have to be the same leave replacement as last year, will stay on this year for her position?
No. That position was filled with a certified teacher that was moved from one position to fill that particular position.
So there was already a transfer then?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so, and that'll be the permanent teacher? Because I was just a little concerned that we were going to go with a temporary, and then it would be instability. So the permanent teacher will be there for the year then?
So the same teacher that was with them last year is with them this year, was with the sixth grade this year.
And will be with them for the whole year, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, great. And then 9.09, the approval of monitors for Hoboken High School. So there's differences in hourly rates, and I'm sure that they're contractual. Is it because that there's more time spent after school than there is before school? Does the staff member who's working, obviously it's a pool line now, work longer after school, and that's why the rate is higher than it is before school?
So contractually, these rates were, and I'm not sure historically how long ago the rates were actually established, but the difference between the two rates is, one of them is for when faculty members are working directly with kids in a supervisory and academic capacity. So during detention or during the PM library monitoring, when they are working in small groups with kids, helping them with homework, assisting them with anything along those lines, they're paid at a different rate. And so when they are monitoring...
Breakfast.
In the morning or breakfast, they're actually contractually paid at a lower rate.
And then I also noticed that the high school was the only school that had PM monitors, and I'm guessing it's because all the elementary schools have the passport-to-learning program after school. So that kind of...
Right.
Correct. That's it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Moffett, please call the role.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Mr. Bianca Mano?
Aye.
Ms. Delara?
I have to abstain from 9.27 line item that pertains to myself for the NJSBA Annual Conference. And everything else, yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Okay, on 9.27 workshops, I have to abstain on the one that pertains to myself. Yes for everybody else. And 10.05 claims, I vote no.
10.05?
Yes. And everything else, yes.
Mr. McNamara?
Yes.
Ms. Soboloff?
Yes on everything, including 9.27, except where the payments pertain to myself regarding the conference.
And Mr. Klumpfeld?
Yes, except I must, on 9.27, abstain on any payment to me.
Gotcha. Motion carried.
Thank you, motion passes. Then we move to all the comments on agenda or non-agenda items. Mr. Moffett?
Ms. Waiters is the first one. We have a total of five.
Patricia Waiters, I have two or three, a few issues, but you don't have to address them tonight because some of them from parents that couldn't be here tonight. First, I want to congratulate you, Dr. Johnson. I was hospitalized, so I wasn't here. And when I learned about your extended contract, I seen it in the Hudson Reporter. So when I reviewed the meeting that day, I seen it on TV too. I reviewed it, and I think it's well deserved. Thank you so much for serving with this district. That was the best news I seen after healing, going through my healing process when I picked up the Hudson Reporter when I got back home. With that being said, I know it's kind of hard because so many people been calling me and trying to be compassionate, knowing that I'm sick, but I told them, I'm here, I'm Pat Waiters. I'm, I'm, me not answering is almost like, that's not, I care what's going on with me with my situation. A few mothers have concerns with the new building, with the, I was looking at your curriculum, plus I also viewed it Saturday. Thanks again for coming to the fourth ward too, Dr. Johnson. And they're having an issue with the curriculum, with the Chinese versus whatever. They've, they've been, I know they've been calling your office like crazy. I'm telling them, give it a chance, or I don't know if they was given an opportunity to pick whatever they wanted for their kids' curriculum. One mother got really emotional with it. She just don't want her kid taking Chinese. She don't think he's going to ever need to use it or whatever. But it's like a lot of issues going on with that. It's the beginning of the school year. We're going to try to take our time and make sure everybody's like comfortable, especially the parents and the children. With respect to the Board of Trustees, I want to explain this to the people that's watching this on TV because it's like, I don't want them to feel that our superintendent is taking a known disregard to anything, but if you do look at the agenda, it says at the superintendent's request. But I told them just like it is, I'm keeping it straightforward with them. This board has been operated for years the same way. It's hard to say when you start addressing certain issues that is not politically motivated, but it is in a way, and it's just something is there, and we got to face it. The Board of Trustees hold a very important role, and I told them that. People quick to sit on the stage and say, oh, well, I volunteer my position. I volunteer for this position as a trustee. But we all know this position hold a lot of power and authority. And lately, the last past couple of years, we had our mayor and other high superior officials that's involved and support a certain ticket, and it gets ugly. It's like the majority versus the minority and so on and so forth, which have segregated our whole city. It's here, you can't ignore it, it's here. So now I'm starting to get complaints, and maybe the people will listen now because they'll come out theyself, because I told them, I can't keep talking, talking, and I look behind me, and I don't see no support, but people getting frustrated. And the answer is not to go during school hours, because now it's disrespecting other students, it's disrespecting our superintendent, and all nine of you as board members. That's why I'm telling you, please, when people come up here, even with some of the serious allegations that I'm hearing, I seen the lady myself, the one that spoke about Connors, and it almost gave me the chills, because I was saying the same thing. She just was a little more laid back. She didn't come direct exactly the way I said it. The school is being segregated. It is what it is. I'm not sugarcoating anything. Our kids are in this district, and our kids are suffering the impact. And it bothers me to see a board member, the main one away saying, well, look at the ratio, look at the Caucasian versus whatever, and her kids are not in the district. I just find that so troubling to see a board member where they, where our Hoboken School District isn't good enough, and they being bused to another school. So it bothers me, and it's bothering a lot of other parents. The segregation comments I'm getting, the kids being left on the bus, I mean, serious issues. I'm going to give you time, like I said. I'm going to meet with Dr. Johnson, I'm going to put everything in perspective, I'm going to write everything down, and I want this board to take it very serious, not because it's an election. Please, we do need somebody that's a minority to sit on this board and really represent the misrepresented people. And I tried to explain to them, but Pat, why you, it's not that easy. They got to come out, and they got to be that voice, and they got to vote for me regardless to what people see about, oh, this one is back, and this one, this mayor candidate got kids. First, I'm tired, and just like they are. We need board members, and this is for the three seats this up. Do not run. Do not run if you're not going to serve Hoboken in its entirety. That's the children, the teachers, the staff members, the scared to come forward too because they feel they're going to be retaliated against, okay? It shouldn't be that way. I'm wrapping it up, because at the end of the day, the superintendents pick, and it's your vote, the board's vote. The board picks the superintendent. Okay, so I don't need her being suppressed either. She's doing a wonderful job. She reframing from being political. But there was only one superintendent that stuck up for us, Dr. Toback. Racial issues, segregation is a hard topic to talk about, but he addressed it. I don't want that pressure on Dr. Johnson. I want this board to work in its entirety and really look into these allegations, and I'm going to give it to each and every one of you and take it very serious, not because it's an election time. This is our kids being impacted with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker I have, first name is Courtney, and I think the last name is Wickless?
Wick.
Wick. Pass. And I have Lou Pesa?
Lee Pizer.
I live at 3611 Park Avenue in Union City, and I'm a parent of a child in the district. And it's nice to see everybody and welcome back to school, and thank you for your service. I've been busy preparing a lot of remarks this past weekend. My eldest daughter got married, so I had to give a speech there. I'm not giving a speech here. I did write a statement of something that is important to me, and I wanted to share with you. It's more of a charge, so I need five minutes if that's okay, Board President. Thank you. The Board of Education as a subset of the greater Hoboken community, I believe, has a moral and legal obligation to right any wrongs that may exist when it comes to your providing an equal and fair and just learning experience for all children of this community. And you can start the conversation on diversity and inclusion by authorizing Dr. Johnson to set up a task force as requested back in June by my good friend Courtney Wicks. You were elected to serve and represent all the children of this community, and I appreciate the time and the commitment you all make in what sometimes feels like a very thankless job. I've been there, I know what it's like to serve. But you're here, and you're serving in this really important capacity, so it's very vital that your leadership includes every child in this community regardless of where they come and what they look like. The Board of Ed can facilitate this very important dialogue, how to can-do methodology that helps members of the community, including all students, teachers, parents, administrators, board members, city officials, and members of the community at large, to engage on decisions that need to be made. This all comes down to, again, your leadership and what you personally feel is right for my kid, your kids, and every kid in this community. This request to create a new diversity and inclusion task force has have, has to have the unanimous buy-in of this entire board, the administration, the teachers, the students, their parents, and guardians. The debate is not about tearing down members of the school community, but it's rather about having a conversation about the underlying issues regarding race, inequities, and identity. I understand these issues are emotional ones and sometimes could easily be avoided. But if you truly care about the welfare of education of all the children who fall under your watch, then you need to display a lot of courage and bravery and humility. To unlock this debate about diversity and inclusion in our school district, you have to make room for real conversation. Large-town halls are not the best settings, and they can be very chaotic and divisive. Smaller group conversation that actually allow people to talk, not to give speeches or to grandstand, can help discover one another and not fear the other. These conversations must allow people to express their anger, their pain, their fears, both past and present, and then shift the focus to shared aspirations for the future. People must be able to hear and see one another and search for common understanding. They must identify how the school district and the community can take practical steps forward to resolving the underlying issues in ways that build the community's confidence. Conversations must start where people feel safe, in their neighborhoods. Only when people see the potential for an authentic and safe conversation can efforts in a community like ours expand. There has to be an emphasis on building a diversity and inclusion strategy together. People need to work on common challenges that emerge from these conversations, from education to family support and to neighborhood safety, where it can be shown it's possible to restore their belief in one another and a can-do spirit. We can bridge the divides if you care to and are honest about it. We can innovate together, and we can kick the tires on what's produced. People can become builders of their own lives. I think it's really important to pay close attention to the community's narrative, the story the community tells itself about itself. The narrative is one of the greatest factors about whether it progresses. The conversations from a task force such as this shall help people, help shape people's individual and collective mindsets, attitudes, actions, and behaviors. These stories cannot be products of a public relations campaign. They must emerge from positive efforts taken by you, the school board, and the larger community, especially given the demographics of Hoboken being vastly different and less reflective of the school district population, student population. By creating conditions for the right conversation and working with various cross-sections of the community, you as leaders can make decisions that will more easily be agreed upon. The question for you is, how best do you move forward? Inaction will only lead to a path of the underlying issues that will fester, and a negative narrative will continue to persist, and little gets resolved. The only way, I believe, this task force gets formed is with a mandate from you, the board, through the courage and the willingness to make room for that right conversation, building together and renewing the school district's story. I urge you to discuss this as a board further and to put it on your next meeting's agenda, and put it to a vote, and establish a diversity and inclusion task force, a subcommittee of this board. A committee that will start these sensitive and sometimes delicate conversations, develop a comprehensive strategy based on what it learns, and implement a plan that balances any inequities. This request to the Board of Education has been out there since your June meeting, and I strongly believe it deserves your immediate attention. Nothing on your agenda could be more important than making sure every child in the Hoboken School District gets the same opportunity to learn and grow and one day become productive citizens of the world. Thank you for listening, thanks for your cooperation, and thanks for your consideration.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Chitali Kana.
Good evening, Chitali Kana, second in Madison. It's great to see everyone. I'm really excited about this year. We started off with the Welcome Back Lunch for our amazing teachers by the PTO and Mr. Shannon, so that was a great success, and the teachers really appreciated us. But more importantly, we are grateful for everything that they've done for us. Our first PTO meeting is tomorrow, and just, you know, again, excited. Hopefully, you know, we'll see a lot of new parents come out, especially from the kindergarten classes. And then lastly, we have our first PTO block party on Friday. Everyone in Hoboken is invited. It's not just the Wallace Elementary School, so hopefully, we see a lot of people out there. We're going to have face painters, balloon artists, DJ, cotton candy that the kids love, and other food. So we're really excited, and welcome back.
Thank you.
Last speaker is Melanie Takirian.
Hi, welcome back, everyone. It's good to see everyone after the nice summer. Just wanted to make some comments around the presentation that Dr. Johnson made tonight around particularly the middle school. I think you've heard me say this before, I have a daughter who is in elementary school, but I was so excited to hear about everything that you talked about with respect to the middle school. I think there's a really nice buzz in town around the middle school. Want to echo Mr. Madigan's comments about how tremendous it is that we were able to turn around a brand-new middle school facility in just a couple of months, so well done to everybody in that. When you were talking about the curriculum and the activities and things that you've got planned for the middle school, it's really wonderful. And one thing struck me, which I think is great, there's so much diversity in terms of the academic program, obviously focused on things that are really forward-looking and are going to help our kids be successful in the 21st century, but there's also time for play, and I loved seeing the reference to recess. I have friends that have, that teach middle school, not here, but in other places, and how much, that's such a transitional time for kids. Sometimes they seem like they're almost adults, and a lot of times, they seem like they're still little children, and they really need time to blow off steam and get some free time to play and get out, hopefully, in the fresh air and exercise and all that. So I loved hearing about that and seeing that as part of the plan. There's so much focus on math and science and language arts, which are obviously critical and important, but they're not the only things that build a successful student and build, even more importantly, successful citizens. So I loved seeing that, and that there's going to be great opportunities for the kids with your, the Explorations After-School Program. And then just thematically around the curriculum, again, so much interesting stuff, stuff that should hopefully engage the high school kids in terms of looking at what those, that looks like, taking something like sociology, which you talked about, which may seem staid and boring, and that they'll probably have to take in college, and taking and replacing it with something that has, is built in the same foundations, but speaks maybe more to things that they're thinking about or are interested in. I love that. Again, continued emphasis on the arts. You guys all know how important that is to me with my daughter participating in the theater program, but it's obviously more than theater, and arts is so important to our, our kids and their capabilities in the future. So thank you for, as a district, continuing to emphasize the arts, because in so many districts, we know that that's a place where funding disappears, and so thank you. And welcome back especially to all the teachers. I noticed about the Class Dojo and at Wallace, we've had that sporadically over the years, but a lot of enthusiasm by the teachers over Dojo this week, so that's wonderful. We'd love to see them being excited about being back at school, because we're excited to see them, and the kids just love their teachers so much. So thanks so much to everybody. Again, great update, Dr. Johnson, in terms of what's coming, and really excited about the year ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it the final speaker? That is. Any comments from board members? Not on public. Is there a motion to close?
I just want to mention one thing. I read a report in the last few days that the Hoboken School District, every single one of our teachers either ranked efficient or highly efficient. And I think that's a testament to you, Dr. Johnson, as being the educational leader in this district, and a testament to certainly Mr. Mariko and Ms. Versace for looking over our fabulous union. So I just want to congratulate every single one of our teachers. It's an incredible honor, and as the New Jersey School Board's representative on this board, I can't wait for our next meeting where I can tout that to other district board members. So congratulations to all of our teachers.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Our next meeting is October 10th, Tuesday.